Hi, everyone. This seconds as our mic techs as well. So if you can hear me, raise your hand. Nice. All right. Thank you all for joining us this evening. And those of you at home watching on WRRL, we appreciate the opportunity for you guys to check us out. Tonight, we are hosted by Wake Up Way County, which I am executive director. My name is Nathan Spencer. We're a 15-year-old nonprofit working on good growth. And we've been partnered with about 15, I'm sorry, 12 other incredible nonprofits that are doing wonderful work, who came together for this event series. Because what we found was that those who are making the decisions on council are usually not elected by those who feel the most impact by it. So we wanted to make sure that we got out to everyone that we possibly could and really get the word out about why city council elections are so important. So part of what we're going to be doing this evening is really asking those questions about what go to the heart of what you are running to do and why it affects people every day. So we appreciate everyone joining us here today. There are note cards on the table that you can submit questions for. We've also got sign-up sheets to keep you informed about getting out to vote, as well as flipping your ballot, and also changes for future forums if there are any. We want to make sure that we're keeping you all informed. So please, if you get a chance, sign up either now or on your way up. And you can also do it online at our website, So now, you've heard me speak for long enough. I'm going to introduce our wonderful esteemed moderator for this evening. Erin joined CASA as Director of Kings Ridge in January of 2022. Erin has over 25 years of experience working with neighbors who are homeless in South Carolina and Virginia. But she is happy to return home to North Carolina to continue her work here. She is most recently worked at Triangle Family Services, managing a COVID response shelter and expanding the prevention and rapid rehousing programs. She has spent her career working to ensure that our neighbors have support that they need and is excited to return to her permanent supportive housing roots. She is literally an expert in housing. And we're so excited to have her join us as moderator of this panel as it is a big piece of what we care about and where we work on. Erin.
Thanks, Nathan. I'm an expert in housing, but not sitting, apparently. Good evening, everybody. I'm so glad to see everybody here. As Nathan said, my name is Erin Nates, and I'm honored to be with you this evening as we explore matters important to this for today. Before we get started, we do have a few housekeeping rules. Please turn off or silence your cell phones. Really want to make sure we're everyone's present and focused here tonight. In order to respect the flow of dialogue, please remember to refrain from applauding or commenting when the candidates speak and respond to questions presented. You'll have the opportunity at the end, the cards that you have in front of you and time afterwards to make sure you have time with our candidates. Again, candidates from speaking, please pace yourself at a consideration for interpretation. And please be courteous to your opponents in your exchanges. We're going to have a good time, so I'm not worried. Forgive me for reading. All candidates for city council run for two-year terms. Tonight, we'll meet the candidates running for the office of District A. This is an open seat being vacated by incumbent Councilor Patrick Cluffkin. With three candidates running, in addition to voting on a district seat, all voters in the city of Raleigh vote for two at-large candidate positions and mayor. All candidates in these forums are nonpartisan, meaning they do not represent a political party. We appreciate the three candidates running for city council, District A seat. All were invited, and we're glad to have Mary Black Branch, Whitney Hill, and Catherine Lawson. This past Saturday, we held our first forum for District B, and we'll hold our next forum on Sunday, September 18th, for the candidates for city council, District C. Early voting runs from October 20th to November 5th, with official election day being on Tuesday, November 8th. The deadline to register to vote online. I'm not perfect. Don't forget to vote. The deadline to run. It was October 14th, but you can also register in person. Thank you all. Now for the rules. Candidates will have an opportunity to give a two-minute opening introduction through the first question. Following that, we have questions formulated around the themes of transportation, housing, climate change, environmental justice, and equity. We received many of these in advance, and we'll have present in the first half of the event. In the second half, the audience will be able to ask questions in the order established as we go. Questions will be directed to a district and not to an individual candidate. So be sure that you're asking questions for all, not just the one specific candidate. Each candidate will have one minute to respond to questions. Please keep an eye on the timer. Straight ahead of us there. Thank you. And we'll give you a 30-second warning. And please end when you're signaled to do so. So as stated, following rounds of prepared questions, we will address audience questions. Upon entry, everyone should have received a note card to please be thoughtful about questions you want to ask. If things come up as we go, feel free to add them. I know I don't think of questions until I'm already in the middle of it. So there's no stop time. We do reserve the right to pick questions if more than one person asks sort of similar questions. At the conclusion of the question period, the candidates will have one minute for a closing statement. We recognize that not all candidates will be able to address every question or every issue. So you may wish to use your closing statement to do that. Thank you. Now for the good stuff and why you're all here. What I'll do is I'll start by asking my question with you first, and then we'll move down the line. And then the next question will come to you, Whitney, and then everyone gets the opportunity to start and end with the questions. All righty. Opening question. Candidates, please talk about your work you've done in your professional and advocacy life that propels you to run for office? And how does your area of expertise contribute to benefit all people in Raleigh?
Hi, everyone. So my direct work experience is as an environmental and community organizer. I think this work is really bringing me into wanting to run for office because I'm considering like the future of sustainable development, the future of where the city is going in general. And I wanted to make sure that it's grounded in environmental equity, equity that also includes people power and power that represents the future of what we want to do. So I am coming into this as an organizer, bringing in the idea that, you know, sustainable development, development in general, doesn't have to come at the expense of the quality of life in the city for the people that live here and what we are willing to develop, what we are willing to create. So as an environmentalist, I just think that is sort of what's bringing me into this.
Yes, my name's Whitney Hill. And my background, I came to Raleigh, the NC State, got a degree there and moved into the corporate world. Was in there in and out for upwards toward about 20 years. At that time, I got experience in the boardroom, experience as a project manager, experience in a lot of different areas of working with people, find out why things don't work and how to get them working in an IT environment. I left corporate world and was actually in a landscape maintenance business for five years that I bought and turned around for profit. And for about the last 27 years, I've been in web marketing with a business that I started called Carolina Web Consultants. And I also done a lot of work in payments and that type of thing. So that's just sort of my background. The reason I'm running is I love Raleigh. I love Raleigh. This is a great place. This is, I don't think we necessarily sell ourselves at a high enough price a lot of times. The trees, the greenways, the downtown area, all these things have come about since I've lived here. And it's just a really super great place to live. And I want to see it stay that way. It's going to grow. And I want to make sure that we have the right type of policies in to protect it and keep it, make it a top destination place to live.
Good evening, everybody. I am Kat Lawson, also obviously running in District A. Thank you all so much for being here, first of all. It's a big thing to decide that you're going to take part in your Monday night to come out and listen to a bunch of like local people running for office and not even like the really like interesting, you know, high-coverage elected office, right? Like we're talking about municipal codes and zoning here tonight. So thank you all for being here. My interest in government and politics and advocacy is kind of rooted in my care for how do the little things work? What are the complicated realities in which decisions get made? And how do those decisions impact us at a very real, ever-present level? So I am an attorney. I've been an attorney for over a decade. I'm also an advocate, and I am now a law professor as well. So I've come to politics with a lot of institutional background care. How we structure power, how those of us who want to serve ask for the trust to carry power is something that's incredibly important to me. I understand that this is an exercise in public trust. I also know that it's about a lot of really complicated statutory regulations and nerdery stuff that I like a lot and have chosen a career where I get to do all of that. And I care about the education piece, which is for me about connecting with folks, understanding that it's not enough to say, here's what we want. We have to understand how are we going to accomplish that goal? What's the context in which those decisions are being made? Are there limitations on it? Are there impacts that we don't foresee? How do we make sure that the decisions we're making are thoughtful, are careful, and are inclusive of everybody that they're going to impact? So that is the background that I bring here. My advocacy also includes a lot of understanding that our political system does not always serve folks. Partisanship is something that is, I think, most of us can agree, really tearing us all apart. So I am here to be on the community's side. I care most about connecting with you, listening to you, and hopefully serving you. Thank you.
Thank you all. That was lovely answers from all of you. Keep thinking about questions you might have as you go along. Near and dear to my hard housing, what initiatives and/or programs will you promote and/or implement to address the rental, the rising rental and homeownership costs in the city of Raleigh? And how will you measure the success of your initiatives as well? Not only the, what are the programs, but how we know they're working? Whitney, I'm sorry.
So this is a problem that's been exacerbated with housing supply, I think is the number one thing. What combination of different things, COVID affecting the city planners, the city permits, the supply for the builders, the different labor problems and that type of thing have been contributed to us getting behind on housing. That has a trickle-down effect, and generally, people get pushed out the bottom of that. So I believe we need, it's really about numbers and supply. We need to focus on doing the things that's going to increase the supply of housing, whether it's at the top or bottom. And it's got to be balanced so that it serves all levels. But what ends up happening is people get pushed out to bottom because even at the top, there's not a supply there. People go into apartments, which pushes people down. And then ultimately, people get pushed out to bottom. So it truly is a supply problem that we need to work on to all aspects of what's going on with it.
So as we all know, yeah, affordable housing, both in this term of low-cost subsidized housing, but also in the terms of just like entry-level housing that folks who maybe aren't making poverty or low wages, but are younger professionals or folks who are kind of new to homeownership, we have problems at kind of both ends of that spectrum. And so for me, when I think about the different tools that we're going to need to address, both subsidized housing, low-cost housing, right? And also just broadly affordable housing, we're going to need a whole lot of tools. Like if there was a silver bullet, I'm pretty sure like New York and San Francisco and like the cities that really have these problems would have found one by now. So we need to focus, yes, on availability. We need to have a broad option, many broad options of availability. That's only going to happen if we get density and smart chosen density specifically along transit spots so that folks can also be reducing the overall cost of living because they're not having to rely on cars, they're not having to travel a whole bunch to get places, right? We need to make sure that there are multiple options for folks. We need to continue to oversee the expenditure of the 2018 Affordable Housing Bond funds, making sure that the city is partnering with groups like CASA, which I know that they've done, on the expenditure of funds for specifically subsidized housing for the most vulnerable members of our community to make sure that they have a place that is safe to live, that is a home that they are building here, right? After living in our community also needs to be addressed. In terms of metrics, making sure that we're kind of keeping tabs on all of this, obviously, it's going to be that increase in numbers. How are we making sure that we are increasing those numbers? The lowering of the actual cost is going to take a long time to see, unfortunately. Like these are lagging indicators of decisions that get made years in advance. But we still need to be seeing how that works over time.
This is a great question. I have, I think, on a community organizer side, seen the direct impact of the rising cost of housing across the city. And kind of what Kat was saying, there's really no like one solution to dealing with this. But I do think that the city and the city can be doing more to push people that are coming here, do want to develop, to actually provide affordable housing at rates that meets people at particular income levels. We have a habit in this city of selling public housing and then hoping that the developers will supply affordable housing. And now not, we're seeing that on so many levels. We're seeing that the city council, whereas they are, you know, focusing and saying on a public level that they have a grounding in wanting to provide affordable housing and fix our affordable housing crisis, and we're not seeing how that's actually showing up in policy. I think it's more than just a supply issue. I think it's a pricing issue. I can remember videos of a house that was priced, I think, $350,000 in the city, and over 70 to 100 cars showed up because we just don't have houses priced at that anymore really in the city. So I think we should be pushing the people who want to come here to develop to do more and also focusing in on the ways that we can institute inclusionary zoning across the city and build density in a way that works for people at multiple income levels.
Thank you all. Sticking with housing for a little bit longer. What is your position on the missing middle changes, which A, dismantle traditional zoning protections such as R4 and R6; B, allow the construction of duplexes, triplexes, and quadruplexes in all neighborhoods in Raleigh; and C, allow apartments for half-mile zones along frequent pedestrians? Kat, we started out.
So when we're ever talking about these kinds of very big, broad changes, I think it's helpful to kind of define what we are liking and not liking about them. So as a general bias, I think that more density is a good thing. I think the more we get to fit onto per square feet of land, the more land we get to save for parks, the more land we get to save for trees, right? Then less commuting we're relying on, that's a good thing. Individual projects are still going to need to be approved on different bases, right? Not all of the changes are make an automatic, you now have a right to build, right? This incredibly dense, dense structure in the middle of a neighborhood, right? I think in general, we like to see you have like your circle, right? The inside of the circle is, might still remain your single-family dwelling units, your smaller neighborhoods with like your cul-de-sacs and all of that. But then the closer you get to the outside of that circle, the closer you get to especially major transit corridors and access points for getting around not just the city of Raleigh, but the Triangle broadly, that's where you want to see density go up. That's where you want to see some higher points go in. That's where you want to see major access points to broader thoroughfares. And that's most important. That's going to be most useful, really, most beneficial, especially for folks who rely on things like buses and the new bus rapid transit routes to get around the city, who are reliant on that kind of access. So broadly, as a general bias, very in favor of it. Individual projects might require working with the community, and that's okay. It doesn't have to be all of one thing or nothing of the other. We can both have a approach that prioritizes growth, that prioritizes density, that prioritizes, right, the version of Raleigh that we know we are building through 2050, while also making sure that the method in which we are growing is inclusive, that it listens to folks, and that is still respectful of existing neighborhoods, and that especially takes into account, right, the equitable histories of our city. Contexts don't get made in historical vacuums. We are inheriting a lot of realities from our history that aren't necessarily fair, and that needs to be taken into account.
So yeah, I think the, you know, there's a nuanced understanding around the missing middle. I think, you know, we are missing housing that is priced for people that are in that particular tax bracket, particular income level. And whereas I do think that density is important, I would like to see, especially with the duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, I think those are like ways to create density without like harming the character of a neighborhood. I think what's happening now with the way they are addressing building density, it's happening in a way that's lacking community engagement. And we're seeing zoning in buildings that are going up, 20-story, 40-story, 10-story buildings that they're trying to place in particular areas, and the community members have no say really in what is happening. They have no aspect to be able to engage with city council on these things. So I think the missing middle is a good tactic for addressing housing affordability and creating housing at a particular market. But we need to make sure that we are doing it in a way that's inclusive and a way that is representing the voices of the community. And I think that's something that's really missing across the board here in the city of Raleigh.
So this is, housing is the top issue. As I'm out knocking on doors and talking to folks on, which was a little bit of surprise when I got out there because I didn't think it would be. But we, I'm pro-high-rise where it makes sense to put high-rises. We need to, our downtown area, there's a big market for folks who are information workers and that type of thing who want to live downtown and walk to places, and that keeps cars off the road. But we also have to respect the zoning of the particular areas. For instance, I'm not in favor of a high-rise going up on Shelley Lake. It's a traditional community, and it has, you know, medium density in there, and those people have bought into that, and they should be protected on that if they're standing up and saying, we don't want that. So there's a lot of tough decisions on this, on how we do this. We are going to have to come up with creative solutions. That I agree with Kat on that, that we have to come up with creative solutions to address density. And that may mean that, you know, if you got a really big lot, you could put a, you know, second house in the back of it. And some types of neighborhoods, I've seen that done where that fits in with the zoning and looks real good and might not fit to the letter of the law with the zoning. But we're going to have to come up with creative ways. One of the things I'm for is putting small communities outside the Beltline where they got everything right there in the community. You got apartments, you know, lower density housing, that type of thing. And people can walk to restaurants, walk to shops, walk to the grocery store like they can downtown.
Thank you all. Sticking with housing and zoning even more fun. How will infrastructure be addressed to account for the uptick of requested and ultimately approved rezoning requests? Interested more in the impact of Midtown and further north. So following right up with what you were saying, Whitney.
Okay. So I've been watching as many city council meetings I can to get up to speed with what's going on. And I do see that as a problem. I don't, what I think is sort of going on here to some extent is the blanket change in the rules may not be the solution with some of the rule changes that I think I've seen. Folks don't want to wake up one day to find out that there's a major zoning change that's going on next to them, and they haven't gotten any kind of input on it, that type of thing. This is an area that's, I'm going to have to go to school and learn on. But the way I'm going to address this is to reach out, I'm already starting to do that, to organizations like the Home Builders and business leaders that I know who are wrapped into this, who are involved in projects and zoning changes, and get my schooling on really how to address these types of things, what the holdups are, what the, you know, is it permits? Whatever it is, to work with, getting solutions that aren't going to rob the people who are already in those places of how they want to live.
Mixed yaps, sorry.
So yeah, I think infrastructure is an important topic as we're talking about development and zoning, specifically with the things I've heard at least a lot of conversation about is around impacts to traffic and as well as like the stormwater management part. And I think those are two things that, you know, need to really be centered in the aspect of development and sustainable development and infrastructure. I know here in the Falls Lake area, they were trying to rezone the area there to put some apartment buildings there without doing much impact, an impact statement to how the development and runoff is going to be affecting our drinking water. The same things with the apartments that they're mentioning around Shelley Lake that they want to build that are affecting the natural habitat that's there. So I think, you know, as long as we are incorporating the aspect of how it relates to community, the impact on community and allowing community voices to be centered in that, as well as the impact to the environment and just the future and the quality of the neighborhood itself, that that's important. So when we're talking about, you know, building in North Hills, how, like it's already such a dense area there, specifically in North Hills area as we are getting on and off of the Beltline, and they want to do more density there and they're accounting for the traffic as it impacts the community that lives there, but not the community as a whole, the people who are also coming to that area on a daily basis for work, to shop, to do other things besides just live. So the question is always going to, I think, center around the aspect of community engagement and centering that within the development process and how it's understanding how things are affecting people's communities, from traffic to flooding to just the what type of building they want next to them is in a Starbucks or, you know, something else.
So when I think about infrastructure, for me, that means what are the core things that the city is responsible for doing and that there's pretty much no other entity that can do it, right? The city is responsible for managing stormwater runoff. It is responsible for water quality and sewage. It is responsible, right, for road maintenance. And there might be other partners, other government partners at the county and the state level that are also responsible for these things. But if the city drops the ball on planning for this growth in these core services, like there's really nobody else who's going to be able to pick that ball back up, right? And so then we're going to be playing catch-up because things have started going wrong. And like, nobody is happy when sewage doesn't work, right? Like that's a very bad day for everybody involved. So for me, when I think about what the city needs to be prioritizing as it looks at especially the densifying areas of development around North Hills, up and down Capitol and Atlantic, right? Then it has to be, okay, what is the impact on the infrastructure we have here right now? What's the capacity, right? How many tens of thousands of gallons of water can this system handle right now? What does it need going forward? What is that going to cost? At what point will we actually have maxed out the capacity we have right now? And it will be a really problematic process, right? To then up, to convert, that's not the right term, but to convert, right, that system to have the greater capacity. So looking at these issues for me to the council, it's not just about, okay, well, what do we make need right now? Or three years, this is the, no, this is 15-year planning. This is 20-year planning. And making sure that the calendar of investment on the city's part is keeping track with that projected future growth, not only what's happening right now, right? It's like the Six Forks Corridor Plan is currently kind of finally hitting that moving spot where there we're going to be making the changes that the Waffle Midtown Plan wanted for the Six Forks. But we're a couple of years behind schedule, and it's more expensive now because we had supply chain issues, right, and a big old pandemic. But that's the kind of thing that the city has to make sure that it is keeping an eye on because nobody else is going to be paying attention to that stuff.
Great, thank you all. Mary, I'm going to start with you on this one because I thought it was a little bit what you were saying last. What efforts are you making to incorporate the new neighborhoods that were put in your district in the most recent redistricting process? The neighborhoods around the Green Road Community Center are majority people of color. And if moved into District A, which is majority weight?
So actually, I was just out there canvassing yesterday. You see me scratching? It's because I had mosquito bites from the time I spent canvassing out in that community. A lot of people there aren't, you know, fully aware about what's happening. So I think, you know, it's a, it's part hitting the ground, doing canvassing, but it's educational outreach as well because the nature of our city is changing. And people who have been in a particular district for the decades that they've lived in this particular community have a different district, and they don't really know how that's impacting their quality of life. So it's been interesting to knock doors in those communities, talk to people here, how the types of issues that they care about and the things that they want to see within our city council. And I plan to be doing more of that, more door-knocking in that area, more mosquito bites, so.
Kat, we got to you next. We'll go back there.
Yeah, so the beauties and senses, right? Like every 10 years, our lines kind of have to change. So for me, that, I am very much in agreement with Mary, right? It means showing up, meeting people, saying, hi, welcome to the neighborhood, right? Your neighborhood didn't move, like these kind of really artificial lines moved. What's on your mind, what concerns you? So showing up, meeting people, introducing myself, introducing that's what they need to know about the city and kind of what's going on in their new district. to know about the city and kind of what's going on in their new district. Um, then probably also a targeted mailing that's just, again, welcome to the district, here's what's new.
So my primary campaign strategy has been to go out and knock on doors and I can't get to every precinct, can't get to every door. So one of the areas that uh I will definitely be knocking on is at least one precinct over in that area, uh, maybe a couple of precincts. And uh getting to know what the problems are. Are you, the problems as you go from section of town to section of town are different conversations, different. This has been my way of really honing in on what folks need is to go in and let them talk and just ask them what's important to them as far as the city. And they, you know, I said before, housing's the big one, but uh, that I've talked with folks and everything. But uh I need to get out to that particular section too and I'll find out what's important to them.
Y'all have seen Lindsay walk around, so do make sure that if you have questions or if you think of something, keep writing about, uh, I didn't mean to make you jump up those, yes. Um, as you see her walk around, she's definitely here to collect your, your, your questions. Um, so Kat, I'm gonna come to you and then we're gonna get back down the row. How would you address investors buying houses, redeveloping and renting, also known as compositional change in neighborhoods?
Yeah, so I think we've all probably saw the report a couple months ago, right? That we have like hedge funds who are starting to buy properties in Raleigh, um, and either just hold it or end up kind of max converting it and we just don't have a lot of visibility yet into what that looks like, what scale that we're talking about is. So my understanding is that council has already kind of tasked staff to kind of try to actually get real data around this so we can actually get better visibility into what does this look like, why is this happening, where is it happening, right? Is it, are there particular reasons it's happening in certain neighborhoods and not others and can we correct for that? So for me, a solution requires having that kind of information. Like until I have more visibility and more data, I can't make a prescription for how to fix it. Um, I think that once we do have better information though, there might be some way that we can limit that kind of, especially if it is um investment and purchases, right, that end up kind of hopscotching over the interests of the community, right? We don't, that's not serving our city. Um, so for me, figuring out if there are ways that we could cabin that, limit it, restrict it, provide more transparency around it. However, we don't, what we don't want to do is end up creating a really over broad response that then shuts down a lot of people who individually might create, right, a personal LLC because they buy secondary homes and they can rent it out personally. Like, that's the lawyer in me that's like, what are the unintended consequences of, right, trying to solve this particular problem? Um, so, you know, wait for a little bit more information, but kind of threading the needle on those two sides of that issue is what the priorities can have to be.
Excuse me.
Yeah, I, I agree with Kat on most of what you're saying there. Uh, and to add on to that, we need to, you know, once we understand what's going on with all this, uh, we need to determine, well, is this productive or not productive? A lot of times bringing money into a community with investors and that type of thing is productive, but if it's destroying the neighborhoods and it's hurting the folks that live there to keep their traditional neighborhoods and that type of thing, and, and the plan is to tear houses down and we've got a lot of houses that are sitting there unoccupied. Uh, if we get beyond the bubble, right, is that gonna end up being unoccupied homes that are sitting there with, you know, weeds growing up in the front yard and stuff? So we do need to find out what this is all about, why they're coming in, what the plans are. Uh, city, you know, zoning is a very powerful tool and I would imagine there's some other tools that we can use uh to deter the negative activity and that type of thing with this kind of thing. Uh, but, you know, we sort of need to get the facts together, find out what's going on. And uh one, one other thing I'll say is I don't, I don't like unoccupied real estate, especially when there's a hu- housing shortage and we, when we don't have enough businesses out there. I have noticed with a lot of our commercial stuff that landlords just aren't putting people into the stores and I sort of know with some of this stuff, they, they not renewed leases with tenants and that kind of thing. So what I really want to see there is that we start looking at that and having policies that keep occupation, whether it's residential or commercial.
Yeah. Um, how would you address investors buying houses, redeveloping and renting, also known as compositional change in neighborhoods?
I got a little distracted in my brain there. Um, so you're gonna see me talk a lot about prioritizing being in right relationships as a community organizer. It's like the grounding of where I show up in the world. I don't know everything, but I know that I can be in right relationships with people who know the information and being in a position of power, quote unquote, when it comes to the council, you're able to utilize that information in a way that creates equity. So I think in, you know, joining what Whitney and Kat have said, I definitely think, you know, there is space to be grounded more in the information as it relates to this issue. But I also think that we should be looking to what other cities are doing to address the problem. I think, you know, Atlanta recently just re- put out some rules around capping the amount of investor properties that can be bought in the city. So I think there could be models that could be represented around the things that are happening in progressive ways in other major cities um across the country. So I think it's uh too part of like educating ourselves on the issue at hand, but then also doing really proactive things to address what is happening because it's a very perverse issue. I know people fundamentally who are unable to afford some of the housing that is in District A, they actually were uh bought out by an investor. They were the highest offer on the house and then an investor came in and bought the house right off them underneath them and they haven't been able to find another house. We were talking about a young couple right here in Raleigh that just wants to be, had the opportunity to be able to live here and to be able to thrive here. And uh the real reality is that we have people that are coming in because Raleigh is a great place to live, it's a great place to be, and they see the opportunity to make money and it's making it harder for people who have been here and want to just live here and not, not have invested properties here. So I think, you know, we should be focusing on doing more and looking at the ways that other cities across the country are solving these issues and seeing what we can do more up here.
Great, thank you. So we're gonna go into our last sort of housing question, so other than what y'all may have come up with, um, so we're gonna shift after this. But um, I'm gonna start with, with you, Mary, and we'll kind of go down the row. Um, with housing and land use, uh, ranch style homes are being torn down and replaced with huge single home, the single-family homes priced at four to five times the original house. Given the city and voters' emphasis on density and affordable housing, what could or should be done, if anything, by the city to change what's happening?
I think it's important to preserve existing um housing infrastructure. Um, you've heard Whitney talk about how we have a uh housing shortage. I think the issue is more that we have an affordable housing shortage. So um, I think we should be doing more to stop people from knocking down these houses and building these more expensive houses on these, on these lots. I've seen that happen a lot in District A actually in the different neighborhoods, up Six Forks, um, um, along the uh, like near Falls Lake as well. So uh, I, I think there should be some, some rules in place about the specific number of, a percentage of how we are preserving housing that is already available and keeping that as an option for the people who want to live in particular neighborhoods.
I'm not necessarily against uh a house in, let's say, North Hills getting knocked down and a larger house being put up. I, but I do, I agree with the fact that we have to have a balanced uh way of zoning so that we have the right numbers of houses built in different income levels so that we have enough houses in, in corsets for, for lower incomes and that type of thing. That is, that's sort of, uh, you know, if there's gonna be cheating done, it's gonna be on that end where we don't provide that. So I, I'm sort of in the camp here with Mary that we, we need to make sure we've got enough affordable housing. And maybe it doesn't get positioned in North Hills, but it's over here where we've got mass transit access and, and uh you can walk to businesses and that kind of thing. Raleigh's always been a, a somewhat, when you compare it to other communities, an integrated community and with income levels and, and that type of thing. I've, I'm not saying that to perfection, but uh, that to me provides a healthy environment when you have that type of thing. And so, um, yeah, I just, but you have to have proper planning and you gotta do it right. And it doesn't mean you plop down lower income housing in the middle of a higher income neighborhood and that type of thing. You have to plan it out properly and, and put the, it, it's especially critical with the lower cut income housing where they're gonna be able to get the transportation and get access to businesses.
So I used to live on Shelley Lane, um, off of Shelley Lane at Six Forks, so I know firsthand, right, what it is to watch a neighborhood kind of go from these really cute nineteen, late nineteen forties, early nineteen fifties ranch homes to, you know, three-story, larger, more modern homes. And on the one hand, like, yeah, it's really sad because I think ranch homes are really cute and they were really adorable and I liked how they looked and I liked the feel and that was where, and I got to make our first home. And that was awesome. However, there is also, that is also true, right, that housing doesn't last forever. There's a functional obsolescence point, right? It's the nerd word that I learned recently. Um, housing sometimes gets to a point where it's not worth it anymore to keep upfixing it, to keep repairing it. It's time for it to be replaced. And sometimes, and that especially happens when the tastes and preferences of homebuyers change. People wanted bigger homes. They didn't want to live in a 1,600 square foot home on a half acre lot. They wanted a bigger house and maybe a smaller lot. That's okay. It's okay for neighborhoods to kind of transform naturally and it's okay for us to change what we want out of our communities. And so when I think about how do we affect this, change it, stop it, for me, it's not so much about trying to stop it or trying to say that like, I know what a community ought to look like, right? If the seller wants to sell and make the, get the money off their investment of their home, that's their call, that's their right. So if we're zoning, it's more figuring out, okay, are we using the land properly? Do we have, right, can we make maybe lots a little bit smaller so we can cat jet, have that kind of gentle density inside single-family units and homes? Is it maybe also true that entry-level homeownership might not be a single-family home anymore? Maybe entry-level homeownership is going to look like a condo, it's going to look like a townhome. How can we make sure that that affordable entry-level point might have other options and to make allowances for that? So for me, this is a big kind of both and. We can mourn the things that are changing that we are going to miss, that we loved, and we can also be excited and be creative about what's coming next.
Great, thank you. So we're gonna shift a little bit from housing. So if you have any more questions we haven't answered, uh, feel free to go ahead and put them down. For those at home, Nathan's watching the questions, so forgetting yours as well. Um, we're gonna switch over to equity now. Um, I've lost Whitney. Um, how do you feel about the recommendations of the study committee regarding four-year staggered terms?
It's interesting. Uh, one thing that I am for is term limits. Uh, it, uh, I, I think that two years is, is plenty of time. If, if someone's in, you know, campaigning's a really tough thing when you first get in, but if you're doing a good job, uh, then you ought to be able to hold on to that position and not have to knock on 2,000 doors. Uh, and you should have been knocking on those doors anyway while you were in office. Uh, on the other hand, uh, for campaign limits, uh, i- if we did go to four years, I, I would say that we'd have to put some type of, you know, two-term limit or, or something like that on it. And you're gonna get into the box here too. If you stagger them, well, okay, who's, who's gonna get to four years, who's gonna get to two years? That type of thing's gonna have to be figured out. Uh, I, you know, I'm not, not really, not really wholeheartedly for someone staying in office that long just because I, I think they're, you're gonna have to keep public support while you're in there. Or if you don't, then maybe it's time to go out.
Kat?
So full disclosure, I was on that study group. Um, so spent over a year working with a bunch of different folks from kind of different personal backgrounds, political backgrounds, professional backgrounds and like all of them all over the city. And we went into this study group deciding that like we were only going to make recommendations that we could reach unanimously. So we all knew that that meant that we were all going to be about a little bit unhappy. So if we got something that ate, we were all 80% okay with, that was what we were going to do. It meant it took us longer. We spent a lot of time talking about things, but I think we ended up with recommendations that were incredibly thoughtful um and had been debated. Um, and so I think that a four-year staggered term for council makes a lot of sense. Raleigh is growing, there's a lot going on, we're a city of about 500,000 people just about now, and we have a budget of about a billion dollars. That is a lot to learn from a how does this work, what does this look like perspective. There is a learning curve to any job and this is a job. Um, and so giving staggered four-year terms allows time for people to learn, to understand and get comfortable and to make their decisions. And I completely agree, this is not a get out of jail free card for two years and not talking to people. You still have to show up in your community. And the recommendation for staggering that the study group landed on was that the mayor and the at-large would run on one four-year cycle, right? And then all of these city council uh members, the district representatives would run on a separate four-year council, which means that every person in Raleigh would always get some, to vote on somebody every two years. So that election cycle would still happen, there would still be that outlet for how do you feel about your council overall? Give that input, have a course correction if we need to. Um, and that that would be the correct kind of feedback. And in terms of, yeah, who goes first is always gonna be like real complicated. I'm personally in favor of just like, let, just random chance guess. It's the only thing that's fair.
I mean, I think this, uh, the staggering of terms is a very nuanced sort of solution and how, or at least I have a nuanced feeling about it because the question becomes of what, how do we address people with unchecked power? And I think we can look to the city council for the last two years, and we're talking about a city council that in the last two years has eliminated the citizen advisory councils, they gave themselves an extra year in office. Um, they have like allowed for the redevelopment of our city to really start to harm neighborhoods in very material ways. So I think, you know, much to what people are saying, I think, you know, it's a, it's an interesting idea, it is important to understand, to have people that have right knowledge being in positions of power and not constantly have to worry about reelection, but how are we making sure that they aren't, they don't have unchecked power? And, you know, I think, uh, I would love to see a terms that are like maybe limited, but also uh people having full-time roles. I think it's kind of hard to talk about a city, running a city with a billion-dollar budget and it's a part-time position. So uh, I don't know. I think we, there's nuance to the answers. I, I think, you know, it's not necessarily a bad idea, but uh it definitely gets into a sticky sort of situation or it's a very slippery slope, just looking at the direction that our city council has gone with unchecked power in the last two years.
Great, thanks everyone. Okay, so how will you help end Raleigh's current shortage of firefighters, transit workers, and 911 call center professionals? Kat, let's start with you and then we'll come back down.
Yeah, so we have, the lowest number I've seen is 129 vacancies on the Raleigh Police Department, Raleigh Police Force. I've also seen as high as I think 168 is the highest I've seen. Um, and then in the sixties for the fire department. And that is just not very reassuring for a city of our size. In order to address that, right, again, this is gonna be one of those, there's not one solution to this, right? The cities around the country are having problems filling all of their emergency response personnel positions. Raleigh is like, congratulations to us, we are a national level city, we are competing against other big cities, competitive cities, when it comes to hiring the best, right? And I think we can all agree that like, we only want the best people who are entrusted to walk around our, our community with weapons and with authorization to use them if necessary. You don't want that to go to somebody who is poorly trained, who is not rehearsing properly, or who is not kind of playing at like a top-level, A-level, right, version of their, of their profession. So we have to be competitive. We need to be competitive against Cary and Wake and Apex who currently pay their officers more than Raleigh does. Um, we need to be able to retain the ones, the officers that we do have, especially when they are good officers. And then we need to balance that with actually making sure that we are providing, one, non-lethal training, non-lethal resources. The Raleigh Police Foundation, which is in a nonprofit partnership with the Raleigh PD, is currently spending money and making requests with the city for more teasers because not all of our officers had those, because they didn't have the option of non-lethal force all of the time. So making those kinds of investments, right, in modern policing standards and in making sure that Chief Patterson has the support she needs for community-based training, community-based work in order to make sure that we have trusting relationships between um our, our emergency response personnel, I think is really key to making sure that they feel like they are part of our community and that also that our community understands that they are part of us and that we trust them as well.
Yeah, so I don't know if this is correct, but like, wouldn't the most basic answer just be paying people more? I think a lot of people, at least the members that I've met in the community as I've canvassed, the reason why they're leaving the city is if they just can't afford to live here anymore. So I think that's like the most simple sort of solution, just paying people more, making it a city that is more competitive compared to the areas that are around us, specifically for our um emergency response personnel. Um, and then I, I did that, I did that actually, partnering with um nonviolence and uh non-lethal uh trainings that are like backing these sorts of uh pay raises. Um, additionally, uh, I think we should also be looking into like the community-led models that we are developing across the city, our Acorns developing that out more for um, like looking less for uh outside aspects of um community and policing and enforcement and looking more for community-led models and building those aspects up more through a, a deep lens that is actually that is actually based off of a vision coming from the community members.
So I think we're probably all agreed, the police officers, the firefighters need to get paid more money. We're in competition, the biggest competition is not nationally, but here locally. We train these people, they peel off, they go work for other departments. Raleigh is the toughest city in Wake County to work in, period, in the case. And we have to keep the best people. Officers coming down, or people who move here from New York who have experience should not have to start at the bottom. They should be able to start where their experience warrants for them to be paid. We need to, but, but money's not the only part of it. Is there's a morale problem in the police department. I'm not sure what all the ins and outs of it are, but we do need to make sure we treat these folks right, that they are given the most amount of respect, the police, firefighters, EMTs. Number one thing in, the number one responsibility of the city is to protect its citizens. Everyone should expect at that 911 call that someone is going to show up. One of the things I think needs to happen with the police is that we need to start getting them integrated into the community. Out of the cars, knock you on doors, meeting the citizens. We need to get police out on the greenways. I know I saw some pictures that they were some police out on the greenways on bikes, but I don't think we've really fully committed to that. And with the headcount that we have right now, that's probably one of the reasons. So those are things I think are important with the police.
Great, thank you. Again, if we're not answering your questions, make sure you're putting them in here. And those at home, make sure you're sending in your questions. Y'all talking about paying people more, so this is going to flow nicely. Back to Mary. Earlier this year, the North Carolina Budget and Tax Center reported that a family of four must make at least $81,000 a year to afford to live in Wake County, where two adults making $20 an hour, working at least 40 hours a week. How will you address the dire need for affordable housing in Raleigh to keep people who provide services from hospitality and retail to teachers, police, firefighters, able to live in the city?
Yeah, I think there's going to be some creative solutions that are really implemented. I think it starts, you know, just with actually being a city council member or city council in general that really is focusing in on prioritizing aspects of affordable housing and how that looks for the different areas across the city. I think in District A, it's with the developers and making sure that they're actually prioritizing housing that is affordable and not just based off of sizes. Recently at a city council meeting that they had last week, they are trying to price houses, apartments in the North Hills area at, that are 600 square feet at $1,500 a month. And I actually don't think that's very affordable or like really reflective of many of the people who want to be able to live in that area. So just putting the onus more on the people who want to come in to develop this area, on how they are doing it and actually holding them to a particular standard. And also, like I said, preserving the affordable housing that we do have and building density in ways that works for neighborhoods within the North Raleigh area.
Could you give me the question again, I have to make sure I cover.
Yeah, sort of talking about how expensive it is to live in our community. How will you address the dire need for affordable housing in Raleigh to keep people who provide services from hospitality and retail to teachers, police and firefighters able to continue to afford to live in the city?
Okay, so, you know, zoning is one of those powerful tools that the city has. And what, what needs to happen is that we're conscious from talking, you know, I'd like to see the CACs come back in because they provide a place where you can get the type of information you need to get from the citizens to be able to understand what's needed in that particular community. And that includes lower-income housing, all types of housing. Well, what should be built where, you know, zoning, this is all zoning decisions and working with the developers. And the city council's got to be on the citizen's side of the table with this. I think sometimes the city council might be getting too far over on the developers and, and, you know, they're part of the community too. But they're not going to have the big plan that the city's supposed to be providing. And the city needs to be there negotiating for the citizens at all income levels. So I, I think it's just rolling up your sleeves and work with the citizens to really understand what the needs are. I think we're sort of all agreed that every income level should be taken care of in our city.
Yeah, so we've obviously talked a lot already about affordable housing and we just need a lot more of it all over the place. All by, all over the place, I mean, all up and down, right, different income brackets and wealth levels. But then also we need to have it in strategic places and locations that are going to be most useful for the folks, right? That need to get around our city easily and at low cost. So I don't have a ten more to say than we've already covered on that. But I do think it's something that the city could, that I'd like to see the city explore, especially for city employees, especially, right? For our emergency response personnel, other cities have experimented to do specific targeted housing grants, right? Where to actually support city employees living in the city and to use that as a form of a benefit or compensation that goes in addition to salary. I think that would be worth exploring to figure out what the cost of that might be, how other cities have made that work. I think it's worth seeing. The other half of that, of course, is going to be, okay, what else goes into a high cost of living, right? Yes, rent or mortgage is going to probably be the number one budget expenditure that a person makes per month, but it's not the only one. And for folks who especially are reliant on like public transportation and getting around, how can we make sure that that is an easy thing to do? How can we make sure that grocery stores, right, are allowed, close to communities, right? That neighborhood stores are nearby, that they have access to medical care and doctors, right? There's an entire ecosystem that goes into living a healthy, cost-efficient life. And sometimes zoning isn't, our zoning in the way that we've allowed cities to build, especially the highly suburbanized kind of process, doesn't make that easy for people. It doesn't make it accessible for people. And so we need to be mindful of that also. How can folks get to the support they need, the services that they need, and do it with that kind of lower-cost opportunities in mind?
Great. Now, y'all got the hard questions out of the way, let's switch to something easy, transportation. Whitney, I'm sorry, to you. What will you do to help increase public transportation infrastructure, such as like rail, more bike accessibility?
Well, I'm a big greenway rider now. I got into that about a year ago and I love it. And the greenways are great. And I think we can do some more on connecting those and that type of thing. But that's not really solving the big transportation issue. Look, the number one thing right now that we do and has the most short-term prospects for improving transportation is the buses. Now, if I, I'm looking at buses all the time now because I was getting ready for this question. I noticed that they're generally about 20% filled. And I guess the question is, why do we have a big bus that we drive around and contribute to global warming and all that type of thing when, when it's 20% full? And the complaints I've heard is the buses don't show up on time, they're too far spaced, all this type of thing. To me, it's a very simple thing that, and, and, you know, there may be reasons, I haven't researched this, why you can't do this. But can we go to smaller buses? You're going to have to pay more drivers. It's going to be a little more expensive maybe, but you're burning up less gasoline. These buses aren't filled. Now you've got more flexibility. You can run more, you know, have buses show up more often at the stops. You can extend routes. You just really sort of get, you know, with smaller, into being able to do more possibilities with them. I'm not an expert on public transportation, but I'm going to become one. And that would be a suggestion that I would make.
Yeah, so I agree with Whitney, right? Like, having actual reliable, useful public transportation and a useful bus system that's reliable, that serves as excellence, right, is necessary. So I would take the bus every now and then from my stop in Midtown, North Hills, right, to downtown where my law firm was. The problem was I could only do that on days when the weather was nice because that particular bus stop on Shelley and Six Forks had no cover and had no bench. So I wasn't going to stand out there in 100-degree weather in my suit. And I wasn't going to stand out there when it was raining or snowy or very, very cold because I'm a wuss. So I only took it when the weather cooperated and I only took it when my schedule was completely in my control and I didn't have to be in my office at a particular time. I didn't, and I knew that I was going to be able to leave before it got really dark. That is not useful and reliable public transportation, right? And I, that was for me, just, that was optional for me. I didn't have to do that. Like, if you have to rely on public transportation, that time cost of unreliability has really material impact on how you were able to actually exercise agency over your life, agency over your schedule. So for me, one, the buses have to serve as standard of excellence for all of our citizens. And that's going to be especially true, right, as the BRT starts rolling out. If the rollout of our new Bus Rabah Transit route is anything less than excellent, it's going to be really hard to convince people that they can trust it and they can use it and they can build their life around, right? Believing that that's going to get them where they need to go. So having that city just a little city laser-focused on providing, again, this essential core service well is incredibly important. The other thing that I especially am excited about within District A, right? So y'all may or may not know yet about the S-line. It's an old, right, railroad track that kind of goes from north to south for us. And it is already working on being connected with the North Carolina Department of Transportation and then the federal government on a, what will eventually be light rail, commuter rail setup, connecting us to Richmond and then also to DC. So the federal and state side of that is already underway, which is super exciting. It's going to create a connection point between, right, Wake Forest and us. I'm keeping an eye on that. My time is out, but it's such a nerdy fun thing and I don't want to talk about it more. Talk to you more about it later. That's going to be a fun, I think, new addition.
Yeah, I think faster and reliable transportation is like the most fundamental thing here, faster. We need buses that come in more often. And we need them to be reliable, that they're going to actually get there on the time that they say that they get there. I think it's also important to keep our transportation free. I think right now we have something going on where it actually is free. I would like to see that continue into the future. And then Kat actually brought up a great topic around the transportation equity and justice lens that I think is also missing here. There's a, there's a bus stop right in front of my apartment complex, right, on Six Forks. There is no bus covered. So how are we really creating equity and justice for the people that do use these bus systems and need to use them? And also like inviting people to have our cars to actually come in and want to use our transportation system. I think we need to address some of the lines and rework some of the ways that the city is connecting itself. And then also working for the, the light rail and commuter thing is a very interesting thing. I've been looking into that as well. But specifically like working with other cities and doing our part as, as our local part for partnering with what the federal and state level are doing to work on this light rail, work with other cities that are also working on the light rail across the city. Because it's something that's very important. Most people in the Raleigh area, in the Wake County area, are living in one part of the triangle and working in another part. So we really have to be intentional and thoughtful about how we are connecting these cities, the people across, within the city in different, in different cities and different townships within Wake County.
Great, thank you. I only have a few more questions, so definitely think through if there's anything else you want us to make sure we're asking. We want to make sure that we get all of your questions answered tonight. To Kat, I'm going to go. How would you advocate with NC DOT to reduce speeding on its roads running through Raleigh's residential and small business zones? What quick build or cost-effective solutions are you aware of that works? Such as the ones found by, undone by Greenville's North Carolina Vision Zero Task Force?
Yes, neighborhood speeding. So my understanding is that one of the most efficient things is actually stop signs. I know that people really love the idea of speed bumps, but those can actually, if they're not done right, they can cause a lot of damage. And also, especially at night, you might not see them always and they're more expensive than putting in stop signs. So a big fan, especially in neighborhoods, like just make everybody stop. The other side of this is going to be enforcement, right? I know that the city has been rolling out different kind of, you know, we call them speed traps when they catch us, right? We call them like traffic monitoring when they don't, they catch people you don't like. So making sure that that kind of targeted projects are being done in places where we do have speeding problems, especially in neighborhoods, right? I mean, I'm the oldest of five kids. I grew up playing like all in the streets growing up. I know that's not safe, but like, that's what people do and you need to look out for your communities in that way. That also, that of course is just going to bring us back to, okay, well, you need enough police officers to be able to have those kinds, right, of traffic monitoring. If you don't have the human bodies to do that, those human bodies are going to get used to responding to domestic violence calls, right, in immediate projects, right? The actual type of enforcement that is prospective-looking, that tries to problem-solve going into the future, requires investment and requires planning. So this is one of those where I know people do a lot of like really creative work here. One of the quirky things that actually has a good, that has a weirdly positive impact on reducing speeding is public art in intersections. Totally counterintuitive, but it's something that some studies have been done. You'd actually just like paint crosswalks in a really pretty pattern, traffic slows down. So, you know, maybe we'll just have some massive beautification efforts.
Okay.
I think there are, you know, the simple solutions, stop signs, speed bumps, the little medians that are in the neighborhoods. But I would really be interested in seeing, or at least ensuring that the neighborhoods are centered in the designs of what's happening with the traffic in their neighborhoods. Because they're the people who have to drive in the neighborhoods more than anybody else. And they know what would work or what wouldn't work. So I actually think that art idea is pretty interesting. It sounds pretty cool. But, you know, my whole goal would be just making sure that the people who are living in that respective community are centered in what sort of traffic development and stalling they would like to see in their neighborhoods.
Yeah, I like that art idea. And not just for that, but there's a lot of places that we could paint that would make Raleigh look a lot better, like overpasses and that type of thing. But I, I think that we, our priorities on speeding are, I like the stop sign. That's a great way of doing things. It also makes intersections safer in a lot of places where you really ought to be having stop signs anyway. The, the problem that I have seen, and this is my opinion, that we enforce speeding with speed traps in places where people, speeding's not as critical of danger, like say out, going out to Briar Creek on 70. We'll spring up a speed trap there and just line them up and, you know, people going 55 into 45, that really ought to probably be a 55. In my years in Raleigh, there's very little speeding enforcement inside the city, where in the neighborhoods and stuff like that, where it ought to be done. And I think that's primarily because of, you know, getting back domestic violence or, you know, all these different things that police officers are a high priority thing. They don't have time to pull over people speeding in neighborhoods and that type of thing. So I, I think that we need to get the police department up to snuff. We, you put a few speed traps in some of these neighborhoods and people are going to think twice about speeding after, you know, the, you know, it gets out there. And then you have to come back periodically and do it again. And not just, you know, doing it as a revenue generator, but actually doing it as a deterrent in places where speeding is really unsafe, like neighborhoods with kids and that kind of thing.
Great. Okay, Mary? I'm going to you. Would you continue to support and advance the Bike Raleigh Plan that was approved in 2016? Do you still see that Bike Raleigh Plan as a 10-year priority? As in, do you see all the priorities in the plan to conclude by 2026?
I think making a city that is focusing in on infrastructure, specifically around biking, making it more walkable, is important. So I think I would agree with the plans of where we're going over the next 10 years, you said?
Yeah, I started in 2016.
Oh, sorry, 2026, okay. Yeah, I think, I think we, I've seen bike lanes popping up all across the city. I would like to see more. I think it's, I think it's important.
I don't think that bikes are going to solve our transportation problem. Now, this is from a guy who bikes. And I'm not taking my bike out on Strickland Road, okay? One hit and that's it for me. So, you know, we have to be, you know, look at biking and, and I'd like for us to go back and review and see the usage on the ones that we have set up. There's places where bike paths are a good thing, or on the roads are a good thing. And I take them over down there by NC State when I get off the greenway and that type of thing. There, there's high use, you know, out there on the west and southwest ends of town. You've got students using those things. Those are real good placements. You know, I question whether some of the placements are really productive. And it all comes down, who's going to use them? So in the areas where we're not getting usage, I think we sort of need to back off of that and focus our, you know, where we have students and people that are going to use the bike paths.
Yeah, I think having bike lanes as a modality for getting around the city is a cool idea. And I think there are places where it makes a lot of sense. Again, that's going to be even more of your denser areas. I have to look, I don't believe the city is currently on track with the 2016 bike plan, but I would need to confirm that. So I'm not quite sure where a lot of these kinds of projects, right, kind of got slowed down and delayed over the course of the pandemic, for the reasons of all of our lives, right, got upended over the course of the last two years. So I think we've had, especially actually side effect of the pandemic, a lot of people were biking a lot, right? I had a lot of friends who discovered the greenways, right, during the pandemic and getting outside. So I think we have some nice, more helpful use models, like Whitney was saying, for the bike lanes, to make sure that they're in targeted places where people will use them and also where they can be used safely. I'm, I'm, I have concerns about unprotected bike lanes, especially when you look at kind of our bigger roads, right? If you're talking about putting an unprotected bike lane on Six Forks or Atlantic, I have so many questions for the folks who take their lives in their hands to use those bike lanes, right, on those kinds of streets. So for me, it has to be, where is it going to get used? What is it connecting, right? What different points? What kind of modality is it actually offering to folks from a community perspective? And then also, how are we making sure that this is safe, that the folks who are using it are going to be protected? And making sure that there's not, right, a different kind of transport modality that makes more sense along that thoroughfare?
I think we have to be, Whitney? Climate, another easy subject. Vehicle trips that three miles or less make up the largest amount of emissions in our city. Quite literally, it is the quick run to the grocery stores for milk or dropping your kids off at school that contribute the most to climate change. If elected, how will you propose we reduce carbon emissions to address this issue specifically?
You know, it's funny, I was just doing a spreadsheet on buying a Tesla. And I would have saved enough money to pay for the gasoline. I'm paying for my gasoline in my car right now. I think when you look at vehicles that are just driving around the city, it's getting to the point now that electric is probably a really good long-term option to start, not overnight, we go out and replace all our vehicles, but we start looking at a strategy to do that. We're going to save money on gasoline. The vehicles obviously run cooler. And there's also the noise consideration. I've talked to a lot of folks who, when city workers are out with, you know, blowing the leaves off the greenway and, you know, using equipment out there, that that noise is a big factor. It's just an annoyance. And electric tools are going to run quieter than gasoline tools are. And they're easier to maintenance and everything else. So I would be very much for a plan long-term to migrate off of fossil fuel. Just besides the issues with global warming and that type of thing, it just is a, I think, a good cost thing to look at.
Yeah, so thinking about the kind of the climate impact of the three mile problem, right? If there's not having grocery stores and essential services within three miles of their residence and therefore they have to jump in a car. Obviously, yeah, from a consumer standpoint, 100% electric cars, I think, are the future for that. But from a city planning perspective, I think it's also about figuring out, why do people not have a grocery store within three miles of their neighborhood, right? Why do they not have access to those essential services within three miles of either their home or within three miles of the nearest public transportation stop? So that is part of, again, that forward-looking planning that the city has to take responsibility and ownership of, to make sure that we are allowing for zoning that creates opportunity for neighborhood stores, neighborhood shops, neighborhood doctors' offices and all that kind of thing, to make sure that folks have that access. That's also going to be a, is that actually walkable? There are so many parts of our cities that just don't even have sidewalks. Even if you wanted to walk to the grocery store a mile and a half away from your house, you can't get there because you would have to actually just be walking along the road, which, again, especially with Raleigh drivers, like none of us really want to be doing that. So how is that connectivity, right? Is that actually, again, functional and usable for folks? And then again, also planning around those public transportation, especially the high use ones that are being developed and planning and looking at that long-term, making sure that folks are able to access those essential services, those essential stores that they need for their life within an easy walking distance, right, of those different transportation modalities.
So yeah, food deserts are a serious problem that occur across the city. Not so much in District A, I actually live about a quarter mile within four different grocery stores. But the aspect that comes into me having to drag to those grocery stores is around the fact that they are not really accessible by foot. We don't have any bike lanes in certain areas. So improving the connectivity around like how we are making cities more walkable, more densely dense on the areas outside of District A, I think is really important, specifically the areas that are like going through rezoning and development, really being forward, thinking about where we're replacing grocery stores and where we're replacing access to certain things along those transit corridors. And making it easier for people to have access to public transportation. I think it's also really important for city council to focus in on the ways that we can impact greenhouse gas emissions. That's through some of the fleets and the vehicles and the things that we use as city council. So I think outside of that, I think a large portion of our greenhouse gas emissions for the city comes from the, like the vehicles and the things that we use for doing services for the city. So converting those to things that don't, to models that don't use our greenhouse gases, electrifying the bus system and things that we can do to like on a, on a city council level to help offset some of the greenhouse gas emissions that we're seeing from people as we're also, on the other hand, then focusing on building neighborhoods with intention and increasing walkability for places.
Great. Okay. Now to the real questions. Okay, so I'm going to be, I've got your cards, let's sort of put them in order for me. I'm going to be reading them. If there's something that I'm reading that you've written that I'm not saying correctly, please let me know. I want to make sure that I'm truly articulating what your question is. So I think we're back to Kat to start. How would you assess the current city council now?
Start out easy. So this is a, like, let's give them a grade, Craig's unteacher, is that what we're asking? We'll go with yes. Okay. Yeah, so I think the current city council, one, has had to govern right under circumstances that they did not anticipate. The city council was elected in 2019 and then was like, surprise and congratulations, March of 2020 hit and everything changed, right? This is the thing about voting for people and like you always want to make sure that they have their issues kind of like are aligned with you and all of that, but you are voting for people that you are trusting to exercise judgment when things go completely sideways. So frankly, my temperament is not to throw a lot of stones at folks who ended up in a situation that like is going to be really hard. So I think that they were, they have tried to do it at their jobs under extraordinary circumstances and I have a lot of empathy for that. I think there have been some missteps, right? So I think that the council, I think trajectory-wise, I tend to agree with a lot of those decisions that they've been making. The substance of how they've been making those decisions, I would not have gone along the same way with that, right? Getting rid of the CACs is always a really popular one that folks want to talk about. Like, I personally do think that the CACs have kind of failed to evolve and they were no longer representative of many of the communities they claim to represent. However, getting rid of them without a replacement on day one, I think, was a misstep, right? It was a violation of public trust in the way that a lot of people received that decision. And so, you know, we'll go to, you know, A for effort, one of B plus for substance.
I think the city council is doing the best they can without any true form of community engagement. As Kat mentioned, they did get rid of the CACs and they, there were many reasons that guided that, specifically the aspect of them failing to evolve instead of like focusing in on how they could make those areas better and help to evolve them in the 46 years that they had been around, they just chose to get rid of them. And there's been a lot of decisions that I think are, you know, misguided, things that just don't necessarily represent community. And I think people are like lacking trust and transparency from our city council and I think it's not something that I think they really focus on. So, yeah, I think, I think it's kind of hard to govern a city when you're, when you're lacking aspects of community engagement. And so I think, you know, a lot of backlash that they've been facing in the last two years has really been grounded in the fact that they don't talk to people and people aren't always included in the decision-making process. And things are coming and happening in the people's neighborhoods and they don't know about it until after it's begun to happen. So I, I think they're doing the best they can. They could be doing more.
What's your grade?
What's your grade?
D. Did you say D?
Yeah, D.
D, thanks. I just couldn't hear it.
I like the audience participation. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm going to sort of agree with Kat on part of this, that COVID and I, my opinion has gone up on the city council since I've been running, I've done some investigation and everything. But in COVID, you know, you sort of got to give them a break. It's sort of like halfway through a test, the professor tells you, I've taken your pencil away. You, you know, there are a lot of tough things happened and this is, and COVID is one of the things that propelled us into our problems that we're having right now with housing and the housing market shooting up. But the reason why I got into this was the law enforcement, first responders weren't being treated right. I think there's a serious gap there that with the city council on how they've treated these people, the priority for paying them, the first responders and city employees and basic services should be on the front end of the budgeting process, not held hostage to a tax increase. Now, listen, if, you know, citizens want certain types of things, then, you know, in their will to have a tax increase, then so be it. But you don't hold back basic services and say, well, gee, we need to give you a tax increase because we need to pay police more. The policemen should have been paying it all along. That's why we got into this hole with our police department. So I would say that I think they've been real good in areas as far as, you know, meeting some of the challenges that came out of COVID and keeping the city open. But I, so I, I give them sort of a B there, but when it comes to providing safety for the citizens, I'm giving them a C minus in that one.
Great. So Dr. Mary, the question's about community engagement. So I believe, what is your, what is your belief in how will you really focus on community engagement?
So back to me being in private relationships. My, my campaign has really been a collective effort of me being in relationships with community organizations that want to see a different vision of the future. So it's me going to the housing experts, it's me going to the environmental experts, it's me going to the people who are knowledgeable about transportation and grounding myself in their understanding and their knowledge to bring that back into the collective vision that we're making. So I think that's something that, you know, if elected, I would really be focusing on, like having that open door policy, the mutual sort of tactics of like understanding people, what they have, what they're going through and their understanding, their knowledge and bringing that into the forefront. I think it's also important that we reinstate CACs and reinstate them in a way that really reflects the neighborhoods as they have ginger fried, the neighborhoods, giving them more money for being able to communicate with people so that they know what's going on and changing up the hybrid meetings so that they are more hybrid. I served on an environmental, the environmental advisory board for two years, completely hybrid. We did not meet in person until this year. So I know it's possible for us to have meetings in, to transform meetings in ways that engage with people and can meet people where they are. I think it's also important to like see what this new community engagement board can do, looking, looking into the people that we have there and like understanding more about how they can help our city, but then also bringing it back and allowing the citizens' advisory councils to also partner and build together and you sort of understanding what community participation and community like grounded governance can look like.
Thank you. And I apologize, I also had a question about time, so I didn't need to look away from people.
So number one, CACs, they've got us being set up properly so the citizens run them. This was something that before I did, I'll be honest with you, when I was started running, I didn't even know CACs existed. But before I found that out, I'm like, I've got to have some kind of way to be able to find out what my constituency, I can't go knocking on doors, you know, that much once I get on city council. So the CACs, I think, are the solution to that. We don't want them just controlled by the city council, they need to be run by the citizens and we need to be able to set them up in a format that they're representing the whole, you know, of the citizens in there, not just, you know, special groups in there and that type of thing. So I'm in favor of that. I think that one of the things that I'm going to be doing is have it, reaching out to experts. I'm very, I've been networking in small businesses, community for up toward 35 years. I know lots of people and I'm going to be reaching out to experts in the city and finding out, you know, getting information, I'm not pretending to think I know everything or I could get it off the web or get it out of a book. Those are, I think, the key components that I'm going to be looking at to be able to do my job properly and get the right information.
So I think there are really two pieces, right, of community engagement and communication. So one is going to be the structural side, then one is of course the personal obligation of folks who actually ask you to trust them enough to make decisions about your life on government. So the first piece of that, the structural side of it is, so we have this brand new, right, Office of Community Engagement, it was created last year. The director of that, Tayshaun Hinton, is fabulous. And it's new and it's figuring it out. Same thing with the new Board of Community Engagement. It's a brand new thing. So I'm not rushing to judgment yet on what its promises are or what its flaws are. We're going to give it a little bit of time to actually see, okay, what recommendations does it come up with in terms of, again, this sort of, we keep saying multimodal, or at least I keep saying multimodal, like different ways of connecting with the community, both having digital and in-person ways to communicate, bringing the message of council, right, to people, showing up in communities, going to them, not relying on folks to come down, right, to city council at 7:00 PM on a Tuesday to like give their thoughts about something. So I'm very excited about the Office of Community Engagement, I'm excited about the board. And again, for thinking through what a 21st century version of citizen engagement and civic education and that conversation, right, between folks who govern and the folks that they serve, right, what that might look like. The other side of that then is like, okay, so then, that's cool. Tayshaun's job will be is to figure out the structural side of that communication. What's my responsibility, right? As somebody who is running, as somebody who hopes to serve, right? I actually have an independent responsibility to talk to people and to listen to people and to show up and to make myself available. So for me, during the campaign, what that has looked like is I've been extremely promiscuous with like giving my information to folks, right? I have cards that I will hand you and it has my number and it has my email and I will respond to you. If you start cussing me out, I might not, right? I might say like, okay, this might not be like super productive, but I will talk to everybody, I will listen to everybody because my experience and my base of knowledge is completely insufficient for actually representing an entire community and an entire city. So I have to be curious and I have to be humble and I have to listen and that exists regardless of the structural approaches to engagement.
Thank you. To Whitney now, and for all of you, what is your campaign profile?
Hello? Sorry. It's my first time. Thanks for your patience. Y'all are all so much smarter. Have any of you made changes to your resumes to make yourself more palatable to the voters?
I'll be really honest with this, when I met with the home builders, we had, we have to, we haven't changed it yet. On my website, I said something in there about making home builders pay, or developers pay their fair share. And I was asked about that in the meeting and I said, well, you know, that's all the infrastructure stuff that's got to go in. And he said, well, you mean like the sewers in the neighborhood and the roads in the neighborhood and all that type of thing? Well, there's a lot of other stuff that goes on connecting a neighborhood. But I said, yeah. And he said, we already pay that 100%. So we're going to be changing that one. But that's the only thing right off the top of my head that I can think of. I probably shouldn't have taken my Twitter account now, now it runs kind of the way. But I left it up there, I'm not using it. But, which might be a dangerous weapon. But I think that those are the only two things I could think of.
Yeah, so no changes to make myself more palatable to voters, I think was the question. So there was a change that I made because I had honestly forgotten that it was on my resume, so law school, right, lawyer, all of that stuff. So I spent a year as a favor to a friend on this group called Federal Society, who's a legal group. Y'all are familiar, right, that we're not hiding the ball, this question's for me. So, so yeah, so I had a friend who was in charge of that and he wanted to have, hilariously enough, a woman and a more liberal perspective on it. So I agreed to serve on that board for one year to help filter out the different folks that he was inviting to come in. Did that, I think, for 2015, maybe? And I'd kind of forgotten about it, honestly, because it was just like the year and I was like, okay, sure, I'll help you and then we'll move on. So I ended up taking that off because it's just, it's not representative of my So I ended up taking that off because it's just, it's not representative of my legal philosophy, it's not really representative of my politics to the way that folks understand it now. So, yeah, so that was a change that I made, but again, I'm not, I'm happy to talk about it, if anybody has questions?
No, I think a big part of my platform is my transparency. I kind of wear my identity on my sleeve. So if you were to look me up, you'll see Mary Black, environmental educator, environmental advocate, climate justice organizer, and like all of the different sort of spaces that I've been in doing that role. You might see my TikToks, I have about 90,000 followers on TikTok just from talking about climate equity issues over the last two years. So I think I'm pretty transparent on social media, on, in digital media, in person, that I haven't changed anything.
So how many of y'all just, like, opened up your social media to check on everybody? Yeah, I've got a whole lot of hits later. And we're sort of out of time, so I'm gonna hit sort of two more questions, but we're gonna open up the space so that the candidates have time to speak to you all and you can talk to them one on one. But sort of two more to go. This question, it's about time, and I think we're, to Kat to start. Serving on the City Council will take 20 plus hours a week to do a good job. How will you fit that into your schedule?
So, yeah, so in my former life as a corporate litigator, I would not have, but I am a law professor now, so my schedule, right, it's classes, it's very predictable, I know what it looks like and when it looks like busy and when it's not. So for me, building in, right, the time for, yeah, the 20, 20 hours is honestly lighter than what most folks tell me it is. Doesn't concern me, again, it's like, I was a corporate litigator, the work and time invested does not scare me and plus, like, I like murdery, I like reading, like, the notion of, like, reading white papers and, like, planning documents, I think it's kind of fun, which might make me sad, but, you know, it brings me joy in life. So I'm not terribly concerned about that and how it'll fit into life.
So I'm a young Zillennial, Zillennial are people who were born in the 90s. And every day I wake up at like 6:30 in the morning and my question for the day is how can I impact change in my community? So it takes different forms every day, but it's really just me grounding myself in the ideas that I need to be an active participant in the world that I want to create. And I think that is how I know that I'll have enough time for City Council. Currently, I do have a full-time job, I work at a nonprofit as a narrative manager with, and that's a full-time job, but it's online and I think, you know, because I, I literally eat, breathe, social justice, politics and environmental work, so it's like everything that I do every day. So I don't really think, I'm not really concerned, I don't have to ask that question, but I'm not really concerned about time because I am waking up to, like, do the work for the community and going to bed thinking about what I can do tomorrow. So time is really just an illusion in my mind because I'm waking up to make sure that I'm always doing more.
Boy, I'm gonna be ready for the break after all this campaigning. I, I've sort of found out where my limits really lie with campaigning. You know, I've been out really four or five hours a day outside of the regular workday and then a good part of my workday working with strategy and all the stuff that we gotta do, answer people and all that kind of thing. But I've been out knocking on doors, three to four hours a day, doing that type of thing. So I'm sort of getting a feel for, you know, I think pulling back and the bigger schedule with, the schedule of City Council is gonna be a little bit of a vacation for me. But I own my own business, I have flexibility with that, I can delegate activities to people and that type of thing. I'm a serial entrepreneur, so I know what it is to be spending, to spend in a whole lot of plates. And I've sort of got a taste of this, looking at, watching City Council meetings online, keeping up with what's going on with the city and everything else and what it's gonna be like to think in that mode and also have to carry on my other business responsibilities. So I'm ready for it.
All right, so sort of starting with the beginning and reflecting on this beautiful city, we've heard a lot about your policy, but what makes Raleigh great is its people. What is one story or instance when you knew Raleigh was your home? Also, thinking about our future of Raleigh, what gives you hope?
This is a really great question. I don't actually have, like, my grandparents and my parents aren't from Raleigh, this is my chosen city. I moved here for middle school, to attend a middle school here and just fell in love with the city. I fell in love with the, the natural aspects of the city, the, it's actually gonna be my favorite time of year pretty soon with the leaves changing. It was the City of Oaks. I had an experience in middle school that really grounded me in why I do the work that I do. A part of the middle school that we went to, it was, we were making a field guide for the urban wetlands that is downtown. If you don't know, there is a wetland at the Walnut Creek Wetlands Park. And it's an area that has a legacy of environmental injustice from flooding and the community group there, the Partners for Environmental Justice, and the church that they have there is actually doing work to address the legacy of environmental injustice there. And I got partered in with that early on in middle school and then found my grounding as an environmentalist through that work and it led me to study environmental science when I got to college and coming back and doing more community and environmental based work here. And I think it was in that moment that I realized that this was my chosen home. I'm not, I'm not born in Raleigh, but I am from Raleigh and if you ask anybody, this is, this is my hometown. So really what excites me, I think, is the vision that people are building across the city. Right now, we have people who are challenging the City Council in every district across the city because a lot of people just aren't really happy with the direction that we are going and they want to build something more collective, more inclusive and more thoughtful. So those people, I think, give me hope, they inspire me, they make me a better person, a better advocate, a better activist, and I'm just really excited about what we can all do collectively together. Because these are, even if not elected, I know these people are still going to be doing the work on the ground, it's movements that are going to continue into the future after the, after City Council election is over. So that's what's really exciting for me.
Well, I've been here a long time and I could probably write a book on stories that happened to me during that time and I don't have that much time. So I'm gonna tell one story that's pretty interesting. So I got my new electric assisted bike. I sort of figure out when you are overweight, the regular bicycle, you need to go ahead and get something that gives you a boost. And I was out on it so happy riding and my wallet came out of my pocket. And so after I got home, I realized, oh, my wallet's gone and I'm in full panic because I gotta go replace all my credit cards and all, there was a $100 bill in the wallet. I'm like, surely, that's gone, but maybe I can go back and retrace it. And I went out, my wife was at home and everything, she knew I'd lost it. And the phone's ringing over and over, I'm in this panic to find this wallet. And I finally answer the phone, it's my wife, and she said, there's a man here who has your wallet and he got your address off of your license and brought it over, $100 bill and all of that. I was sort of in a big panic about getting it. Probably wouldn't be as nice to my wife as I should have been. And I had to repent big time on that, but that's the kind of people that, you know, that Raleigh is, just out there on the greenway, someone picked that up and brought it over to my house. They didn't call me up to come get it or anything, they brought it over to my house. So that's, that's the kind of place I want to live.
So I think mine is kind of that very cliche moment, right, where you go into your morning coffee shop, for me it was morning times at that time downtown and it was chai tea because I don't like the taste of coffee. And, and they, and they all knew my name and they knew my husband's name because we would go and get our morning and Friday morning breakfast dates because we were both new lawyers and evenings were not, not open for us. And realizing, like, oh, this, like, they know who I am and I know who they are and I know the name of their son. And I get to talk about that and those little touches of community that we build, right, where it's not just, oh, we interact and this is transactional, but it's also like, oh, hey, I see you and I know you and I want to learn more about you. That was for me, I think, what made me just fall in love with Raleigh and realize, like, this is a place where people are seen and it's a community of folks and this is what makes me hopeful about the future of the city. It's a community of folks that honestly, I think, want our city to be the best version it can be and they want to make sure that they're not leaving folks behind as we pursue that vision together. And even where we might disagree, right, on what that ambition is going to look like or what the most optimal version of Raleigh is, I think there's something incredibly powerful about a community that says, no, we're gonna fight and we're gonna argue and we're gonna, like, go to the max over the best version of ourselves. That's an immensely powerful new thing and I think that that is something that Raleigh has in spades. And I think it'll see us through all the disagreements and all the growth and all the tension and it's something that I very much love.
Awesome, thank you all so much for all of the time you spent here and all the wonderful answers you've given. I know I sure feel hopeful right now, it's nice to think about. Our city has so much room for growth, but it's really exciting that we have truly solution-focused folks across the board who are willing to come forward. Thank you all for being here, I think it really is important, but none of this can be done without all of you and your voices are what are the most important. This is how our communities get our needs met. So thank you all for being here today, thank you candidates for your time here, thank you Compass Rose Rory for your space tonight. Thank you to all of our community partners for hosting, this has been so wonderful, y'all have an amazing audience. A few really important closing remarks that I have to read because I can't remember the names. Check your voter registration, they have changed as we talked about earlier, so make sure you know where to vote, make sure you're ready to vote. Remember that early voting runs from October 20th to November 5th with Election Day on November 8th. Information about hours and other election details can be found with our friends at El Pueblo. The table.
Which candidate fly around?
Just kidding. Check them later. You can contact the candidates after the forum through individual information that can be found on vote411.org. Everyone's gonna stick around for a few more minutes, so we did in early, y'all, there were 20 some questions and I'm so sorry that we didn't get to all of them. They are super important, so definitely have a minute, take the time to talk to our candidates now or reach out to them later because it is really important. It sounds like the weather got a little wild, so please be careful getting home safely. Stay safe, stay well and enjoy the rest of your evening.